In your regard, by dates.
Today's day?
Yeah.
What is today, the twenty first?
Yeah.
All right. At the end. In the year of our Lord.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you say it.
Absolutely. Do I know him?
He is now seventy.
Okay, he says it. Okay. That's on.
Since we got three minutes.
That's. We should start by that and end by this one.
Hey, we good? Don't have to push the button. No, we don't. You hear me now? All right, um, January twenty first in the year of our Lord, twenty twenty six. Seven o'clock P M. Mountain Standard Time. Uh, call for our order for the Euphemon City Council. First order on business is a roll call.
Councilmember Birch.
Here.
Councilmember Orkens.
Here.
Mayor Larson.
I am president.
Councilmember Deline.
Here.
Councilmember Beal.
Yes.
And Councilmember Stink.
President.
Excellent. Uh, our second order of business is prayer, and our mayor brought in this. Very graciously volunteered that.
Our only Father, we're grateful for our many blessings, grateful to live in this valley and this city. We're grateful for the friendships that we have and we're grateful for the opportunity to be here in this meeting, and we ask that thy Spirit will attend us. Bless us that we will have open minds and open hearts, that we'll be able to those participating will be able to present themselves as they would desire, and that we will have thy guidance in the decisions that we make. We're grateful for the residents of this city and ask thee to bless them. We ask thee to bless us with the needed precipitation in the mountains and in the valleys. And we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Uh, third order of business is the pledge of allegiance and one of our youth from Star City, which is so happy to be here that she got here so that she could lead the pledge, Jess Keys.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jess. Um, do I have any public comments? Next one. Page two. Uh, number one on page two is a veteran's memorial presentation by one of our past city council members, um, Mulan.
I guess so. Explaining, I'm gonna flash, this is not the, gonna be the original post. We're working on a better one.
Yeah, I'll speak in the mic, because I have to speak in the mic. Yeah, exactly.
So the statue is pretty much complete now. That is an incomplete picture of the statue right there. But he's, this Brad has really worked hard on it, and I gotta have Troy kinda help me out here according to what, uh, Beverly was saying. On this, so. But, uh, we do have forty thousand dollar grant from the
Grant tax.
Yes. Black bags. Do I have any questions about the poster or anything, other than it will be enhanced with a, uh, place to send the money and all that stuff if you wanted to donate? So.
If the, if you notice the statue, it, it's representing those who also lost.
Yeah, these were all soldiers in base. A I A.
Yeah, so you have a mother and a son and a a child in arms as well, representing the whole family paid a price, not just the individual as well.
This idea was that, was that Brad? Yours?
That's mine.
Get down.
I come to him and I said, well, I did Terry, my brother. Says, I know a guy that can help because telling was and he has Brad Gudies. I think he's saying that young boy's his grandson. And he got some people that he knew took the picture and he just took it from there. He's done a wonderful job. I really think that, uh, he's quite a talented individual, so. But, uh, I, I, oh, it's gonna go through my committee. I, I put together uh, Todd Alder, the uh, Tyler Alder. And, uh, I'll have to think about it. Penny Kittlesridge, Mark Larson, Paul Gardner. And
Beverly.
And Beverly ended up there, yeah. She had to come. We needed her and I didn't know it. So. And, uh, we also have, uh, uh, Brad there on that too, and he had to be there. So that's, that's, that's a group I'm working with. And it's working out really great. So many things that I didn't realize. One of the things I kinda started doing today was the, the sixplex that's there in front of the gazebo. This will be on the east side of the gazebo. And it'll be uh, a graphic design at first, and then I have, uh, uh, Dan Lund, he's got one of these GPS things that I asked him today if he couldn't put a stake on every corner so we'd have an ID how big we want it, because I got three different sizes to look for. And then I got a bit with Shane over there to find out exactly what that's gonna entail with sprinkler heads and one finger and others. But, uh, that is pretty much unless Troy got some more information, I would think.
I'm gonna tell us why, why we're, um, moving this to where it is in the location and what we're gonna do with the old location of the fallen soldiers, uh, statue.
I didn't, were I just felt like there wasn't enough room. There's a flagpole standing there. And I just felt like it should be facing east. Well, it won't face east. Statue will face west. The plaque will face east. But, uh, I don't know. They'll have to get after me, and that's why I, I envisioned it there, and that's all.
And, and if you look into the future, how's this gonna work into the, the Veterans Memorial Day services?
From what I understand, and I need to talk more with Beverly, she wants to move that, uh, memorial, which is more like the memorial thing from the south side of the gazebo. And it'll be moved to the east side, from what I'm gathering from her, and that's I'm not real sure that that's her thinking, but.
Yeah, so she's thinking that this could be moving it here, we could use this also as a kind of a staging area for some of those events in the cemetery in the future.
Yeah. Like, I've, I'm not I've been bad on that. I haven't spoken with her about what she's really envisioned either, so. So that's, uh, that's my proposal. For the council, I ask approval. And so.
Does this by chance include any like updates of plaques for people in the gazebo?
Now, the plaques that are inside the gazebo are service members that have served, come home.
Yeah.
This particular statue and plaque indicates soldiers that did not, or K I A killed in action.
Yeah.
There's, I think, ten or eleven of them that we have from Spanish American War to the Vietnam Conflict. So we have all the ones that we can find. So.
Get this done, and then your next project will have to be to update all plaques for all people that are not out?
Yeah, that, that Beverly's got that kinda going now.
Okay.
Like, right now, the plaque that's there now is being added to right now, so. So it's a red plaque that they take down and they can put, uh, more names on it if they're needed. So it, it's a good program, so. Beverly's on top stuff. Don't, don't let her ever go anywhere.
She has enthusiasm.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, well, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Alma.
Thank you.
All right, we get on that. Second order of business, consent items. Um, consent item A, ratification of warrant register between December twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and January sixteenth, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
We can do all these together.
So with these.
All these together?
Yeah, so with a consent agenda, it's all just, um, uh, fun tree stuff, and you can move them all at once. Thank you.
Nice.
Yes, and so you can say, I moved the consent agenda, and then somebody seconds it and off it goes.
Okay, any comments, questions, concerns, problems, complaints? Okay, there's your consent items.
I move that we approve the consent items.
All seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. You opposed? Excellent. One eighty-four more of these. Uh, number three, action items and action agenda. Action agenda, number A. Euphemon City Ordinance twenty-six dash oh one Cemetery Ordinance Update. Mr. Shane Davis.
All right, um, I came for the council prior for some change on some ordinance. Um, they, you guys have them and all the updates on them. Um, myself, Shane Davis, is the section of Euphemon City. Uh, my task for the cemetery as a section is to beautify the cemetery. Uh, reasoning for the changes is in the bylaws, and there's a couple pictures in there also, uh, kinda showing what, um, I've had to deal with. Some of those, um, plots, headstones, get really overcrowded to where we cannot go through and get the weed eating done, or even the mowing, because some of the stuff is actually out to say a foot, foot and a half away from the headstone. We come to the conclusion of just basically doing what we can around what there is, and then giving it to the individual that owns the headstone to, you know, maintain around what they've put on there. And um, any questions on any of this here? The pictures?
It's all at the Park Cemetery, I guess, not, nothing at the Pioneer?
Pioneer's not too bad. Um, we've only had one complaint at the Pioneer Cemetery about the one single flag out there that has not been changed in the past. Um, that's about it really there. Um, that's usually about the only thing I've ever heard about to the Pioneer Cemetery. Usually everything else is either maintained or cleaned up by us, the, it's blown against the fence.
If I could just reproject, I think, um, when I presented this in study last time, I mentioned that there was a duplication. After looking at it again, it needs to be in that second location, so we left that, uh, phrase in both locations. Because it was, uh, which is, was it important that it be in both locations?
One section was concerning new burials, and the other section was concerning existing graves, and so if you put it in one place, it didn't apply to the other, so it had to be duplicated in both sections.
And I noticed that the change in turd has been corrected in those sites as well.
All right, cool. So we gotta take a vote on that. All right, action agenda number A, Euphemon City Ordinance twenty-six dash one.
I move that we accept the city cemetery ordinance and present.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
And opposed? Thank you. Shane, you got the second one on the indigenous problem.
Yes, um, I did receive the letter, um, from I don't know who's excuse me, uh, Bob Conger, he had, uh, wrote a letter to the um, okay, about James Neal and his uh, kind of a life story and what his struggles were with it and whatnot, and I went through and I read it, and, um, I see fit, the guy did did have a, um, rough life. Um, not just financially, but also in other scenarios. Um, so I did, as the section went through the cemetery and found a few spaces that would be available for, uh, an indigenous individual. Um, I kinda based them off of, say, in like the other section with like a space in between, that's just a single space, not many people are gonna watch, a single space. And then I kinda based it off of, you know, maybe by a tree, because this individual was being cremated, and it's gonna be easier to do, say, a cremation burial, but it will do a full burial and interfering with the tree's growth. Um, but the space I did end up picking so far is right on a corner where, um, it'd be harder to do a full burial there than it would be a, um, cremation, so. Um, I decided, as long as the individual decides if they, you know, putting in a flat, as long as they put in a flat headstone, we'll be good with putting him there. And so I'm, I'm okay with, uh, putting him in there at that spot. If I have to find another spot, because they wanna do a taller headstone, I'm okay with that also. Um.
It'll be a flat one, okay?
Okay, so I'm okay with putting him, he'll be in, um, H block up in the top northwest corner then.
Yeah, I knew Kevin, he's a pretty good dude. He was really enthusiastic about everything he did and worked hard and yeah, coming good. All right, uh, looking for emotion. And maybe, maybe there is really any thoughts on that, or, uh, Bob, or, I don't know. Anybody else has any? Did you, did you wanna say anything? You read your letter, Bob, but?
No, I, I, I think it's, it explains everything, you know?
Sorry, that's fine.
Unless you want a clarification, man. I believe there's also a letter there from this bishop about paying rent. He was, his knees that way.
He does, it does state in there too, that, well, I think it did, I can't remember him. Yeah, he has only an eleven-year-old daughter, and as far as anybody knows, there's no other outside family.
Shane, how often does this happen?
Um, I've been with the city for sixteen years, and this is the first time I've ever heard of an addition.
I just, I, I've never, so, I just wondered.
I've dealt with a lot of different things since I've been sexting, put it that way, so.
I wonder if this is kinda common practice. I'm all for it. I think this is a wonderful thing, and I wonder if the state or there's other
resources?
Yeah, I mean, sounds like we've, we've got this one taken care of, but I, I don't know what happens in larger areas.
I would, I need to see background on this thing, in a way.
That's, you probably have to come up with my, yeah.
I mean, from my past, by talking to another, um, from a mortuary, uh, coworker, whatever, he did mention that other cities actually go further in depth and actually go through and check finances and assets and everything like that, and I just don't see that that's completely necessary, this. You know?
I, I was convinced, Kevin, I'm familiar with his situation.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know him, but I just don't see that you go that far on something like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, and Bobby might need to mention your name too, but.
Sure, Bob Conger. I've been Kevin's friend since he moved down here about three years ago. Anyway, a real good guy, a lot of hard times, he's explained in the letter and everything. Um, he had been unemployed since, um, May of last year, when he had the cancer diagnosis. Absolutely no income whatsoever. Um, people were contributing to his existence all the time. Anyway, but he, he actually, it was a surprise that he passed. You know, he thought he was on the way to recovery, and so checking into it with the mortuary, at least, um, well, actually, the bishop in our ward identified that San Pete County has a, uh, an ordinance where they will provide an indigenous or an indigenous grave. But they don't own any cemeteries. And then speaking with the, uh, Rastmane Mortuary who handled this, uh, apparently, the county attorney said, that's the city's problem, because we don't own any graves. And then I went to Lupe and found that what the city has, you know, went through that, and she was on the phone with, um, with Shane, Shane, sorry. Anyway, and so it's kind of an individual city thing. It doesn't seem to be, you know, he says sixteen years, never done, it doesn't seem to be a big thing. But in this instance, I think it's really appropriate. You know, uh, I did a GoFundMe, raised a plenty to take care of all the mortuary expenses and to cover a plaque and a headstone, so. Let's come back now.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for emotion.
I move that we approve the request, uh, to provide an indigenous cemetery plaque.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I don't want to view opposed, everybody says yes.
You don't have, you just.
There's one.
Whatever.
All right, next one. Number C, Watkins subdivision amendment, Megan.
So Megan is not here?
Brian.
She's out on a family emergency, so I'm filling in for her. This is a subdivision, uh, amendment that we saw this a little bit ago um, with the Watkins, they purchased land behind their, their lot. They wanted to include that as part of the lot, join it into the same lot, so we did a subdivision amendment. Before we could record the Mylar on that, the neighbor, Kirk Perry, decided he wanted to join in on some of the moving the lot lines a little bit. There was vacant land behind the two houses. So he bought some of that from the Watkins, and then because it's a subdivision, it kinda gets written in stone, so to speak, and, and if you're gonna change the lot lines, you gotta re-go through the process, adopt a new Mylar. So what that looks like in this case, uh, the Watkins live here in this house, is the subdivision just east of the elementary school. They purchased the ground directly behind them, and Kirk Perry has purchased just a little bit of ground uh, to the west of his lot. So when you draw the plat amendment, it looks like this, so this will be the new boundary line for this particular lot, that's the Watkins, and this will be the new boundary line for his lot. So there's no new lot created, they're just moving the lines in between the lots. Uh, staff recommends approval on this. Planning Commission saw this last week and recommended approval unanimously.
So there's no other easements they're asking for, any other?
There's nothing, just, just land. The easements were already recorded with the original Mylar, they will be amended to follow the same pattern as what the original plan is. So there'll be easements will be, there was an easement here, uh, that will be vacated, and it will be moved to, to the back. That won't affect any existing utilities, won't be affected by it.
Right, I thought, uh, with the new state law, it subdivisions were no longer brought before us.
So subdivision approval for residential lots generally is not brought before you. We checked, we chased this up the, the poll, we, we contacted the attorney, where this is an amendment. It's a different category than an act, than an original approval, so.
So Ryan, as I'm looking at this, then we're taking three lots and creating two, is that?
Correct.
That's happening now?
Yeah, this, this was the vacant land in the back, and it's being joined uh, and slightly adjusted for those two lots.
No, our position, neither public caring part, no one cared either, so.
Yeah, we've had no negative comments received on this. The Watkins have already been utilizing land, they've already purchased the land some time ago, they've started to landscape it. Um, just decided to join it into one lot, so. Also, you see the, the grass in the back there already. So that.
All right, approval, looking very motion. Uh, I move that we adopt E C R twenty, let's see here, which one's this, Watkins subdivision amendment?
I second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Yes.
And there's no opposed. Number Ds. Subdivision Resolution point six dash zero one vehicle policy gave it.
Okay, so as we discussed last time, um, the vehicle policy, what we're trying to do is add in this clarifying, uh, statement to say that, um, it is permissible for, um, city employees to keep vehicles at their residences overnight. Um, I wanna clarify that after speaking to our department heads, um, this is mostly affecting public works and power. The only people who take vehicles home overnight are, are directors and the person on call. So this, this is just clarifying that those individuals are allowed to take vehicles and park them at their residences, that's part one. Part two is clarifying that during, uh, work hours, um, unless they're on city business, the vehicles are supposed to be in our city, and they're not, uh, uh, to be taken to appointments in Provo or anything else. The vehicles stay in the city. So, yes.
It doesn't apply to public safety.
It does not apply to public safety there, under their own guidelines. Um, are there any specific questions about this? Yes, Jack?
So, Councilor two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, city vehicles shall not be used for giving of other personal purposes. And then the green part, it says it's on infu- incidental use, our traffic, I mean, two of them are permissible.
Like, if you stop at Maverick to get a drink, that sort of incidental use, that's.
It just seemed a little conflict to me.
Yeah, like, if you're out and about and you end up stopping to grab a sandwich or a drink, um, pick up your mail, that sort of thing. Yeah.
And one other question.
Mm-hmm.
Liability, so if it's sitting at my house and something happens to it.
It's covered by the city insurance.
Because that was always a conflict at the college, you, because of they'd make the liability go to you, as opposed like a college something.
I'm, our vehicles are covered under the city's insurance, yeah.
Yeah, those were my questions.
Okay. What else? Any other questions?
I I think it's all right. I think the verbiage is a little weird.
Okay.
A little conky, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
I always said conky.
Conky, yeah.
But I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
It is what it is, but I, I understand. I, yeah, I understand the, uh, the intent of the thing. I just. Danny Randy's gonna come in to that one.
Um, it's up to the mayor, if the mayor wants to recognize Randy.
Super short?
I guess, maybe not.
Generally, it's, it's up to the mayor. Mayor, would you like to hear something?
I don't know.
You're on.
Yeah. I'll, I'll honest, be honest, Randy, whether it's good or not, but I don't know if this is the way you're supposed to do it or not, because I'm still a rookie, but.
Generally not, but, but the mayor's in charge of this meeting, and he wants to hear from you.
Make sure, sure, sure.
So Randy Keisel, the very name from, what about police department?
It says.
That's what I meant. Safety.
Okay, I didn't exactly hear that. So these same guidelines apply to the police department.
Yeah.
So can they take a vehicle to a second job?
They do not.
Obviously, they do.
They.
Fill and check, and, uh, may fill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this does not apply to them. Well, this does not apply to them.
So can they take a city vehicle to a second job?
We will have to take that up at another time because this is just about these vehicles. So.
But police department trucks, not city vehicles?
They are specifically excluded from this.
It's a different.
Yeah, okay, because I just numerous times. You pull up to Lionfield Mayfield. There's a new city police department truck.
Yeah, call me sometime, we can talk about it.
And I'm like. Okay, I understand. Maybe there's an issue. Then I read later he works there. Part time.
Bringing that to my attention.
Man, I mean, I think I think the second, like you say, in person and um for commuting or other personal. Purposes unless authorized by the city. I think I think for me, when I read that. You know, we just, we should be grateful we have vehicles and not be using them. Only for business use, right? I think part of this becomes a perception too, right? If, let's just say, I'm going to pick on Brian for a minute. Brian goes down to Walmart and he takes the E from city vehicle down there to Walmart. He comes out with a whole lot of groceries, right? But nobody knows what he's going to get. He's coming back to the city to have a party that that we're having, right? Okay, but people may perceive him as he's picking up the groceries for his own house. And so I think we need to really be careful with the city vehicles because. Um it's a perception thing, right? They're using tax dollars, okay, which sit which people want to protect. Okay, to go for the good of the city. And I think that that would be my. Two bits about being cautious and using city vehicles.
That's right.
Personal use.
Absolutely.
Because it really looks a bad rap. To city employees if they're using for personal use.
One of our department heads says we have six thousand bosses, you know?
Exactly, right. And and I got thinking about this earlier. I think if they wanted to borrow a piece of equipment, like it says here, or a car. If they go get all six thousand, everybody checks off onto it, have a good time with the with the piece of equipment or the vehicle, right? But yeah, they do have six thousand boss, for sure.
That's right. And so and and from. Our perspective, what I want to have in here is I want to be able to point our residents. Who might see a vehicle parked in front of a residence, I want to assure them that that individual is on call. That that is why that vehicle is there. So we need to have this in here so that we can assure our residents. That everything's on the up and up.
And it was already a practice more or less. We just needed to get this.
We needed to formalize it so that we have it in writing, exactly. Because if it's not in writing, it does not exist.
I think it was the mayor. I think I think that the highlighted green that's been added is a little bit. I think it can be revised a little bit, a little more clarity to it.
Well, do you have any suggestions? Let's talk about.
As it says, the the geographic and lunch break restrictions in the section do not apply to public safety employees whose vehicle uses governed by operational emergency response needs. That seems pretty clear. The last part is it, because as we were reading it, I I thought it was a little, I have I read it twice. But is there a? I don't think that part needs changed. And Jack kind of brought up the first part, incidental use while traveling to and from work is permissible. I don't know if we.
And probably the the part that's giving you pause is to and from work if you're not committing, right?
Like incidental use.
So here's what we're gonna do. Let's let's get the wording the way you want and we will bring it back to you next council meeting. Okay, does not have to be done right now. I want it so that you guys uh fully. Uh support it, okay? So um. Here's what we're gonna do. Instead of workshopping this during the meeting. Um I want each of you to send me your comments. And I will individually get with you and send out uh an amended wording. And then once you guys are okay with wording, we'll put it back on the agenda. Does that work? Okay, so we'll take it, take a stab at it and send me your comments and we'll get it right. And then we'll uh put it on. The next agenda.
So our city attorney kind of wrote this up, right?
Yeah, he did.
We come up with some suggestions, we could send it back to him and he can he could figure that out.
Definitely, but he's not infallible. You know?
What? He's an attorney.
You know Nick. You don't know Nick well enough because he he takes correction all the time.
They're almost as good as veterinary.
Um I am, I am not completely confident. I know you said that. They wouldn't be liable. That because I can see if it was for work, I'm pretty confident the city would cover it, but if they just drove home and there was an issue at at home. I don't know if the lawyers may not want to go to the home insurance first.
I'll check with the trust to make sure.
This comes up in our in my business law class, for all I can detour and stuff. Well, yeah, like if you're just wanting to grab donuts, but if it's like. You know, two hours out of the way to grab donuts, they're not gonna come.
Yeah. But as this vehicle would still be in the city.
Yeah, but if it's there for work, I can see I can see us covering it, but if.
Right, and it would be for work because these individuals are on call.
Right, because if it was ever taken home and it wasn't for work, they just went home that day. I I think there is a loophole there that we might find. Not be what we exactly think it is.
Well, let me get that information for you uh to be absolutely certain and then send me your. Let me suggestions and then we'll talk. I think to and from work is a problem because we specifically said above. That you're not supposed to be commuting in these vehicles, right? So that's that's an issue. What else?
Uh that longest sentence, the vehicle must remain. That sentence is.
Must remain in a city during work hours. And may not leave the city during lunches or breaks unless authorized in writing by department head.
So you like the attorney?
He did. If you have a nicer way to say that. If you want to break it into two sentences, that also would work. Okay, send me your comments. Um probably the best thing to do is to table this to the next council meeting. If we postpone. Postpone. Not table. Not table. And motion for that.
I motion we postpone this until Jen to till February fourth.
Right, thank you.
No, I appreciate that because I think I think we're really only protecting the employees. I mean, it's not the city, but we're protecting the employees with with this. Because it, you know, if something were to happen. Outside of work coverage. Somebody somebody could be, you know, disloyal for a problem. So I'm not trying to pick on the employees. I just want to make sure that they understand that, that this is a. It'd be a liability for the insurance.
He has he has a second. Did we have a vote?
Oh, no, he didn't do the, you had first and second, but we didn't do the votes.
All in favor?
Oh, yes, yeah, postponing.
Wow, we uh picked that one apart. That was interesting.
Well, that's what this is for, right?
You're right, first time. Uh appointments to city board. Eddie Christensen is a five-year member of the utilities board. We have to vote on each of these things. We voted on it together. Excellent. And Val Hill for a four-year term to the historic board, looking for emotion.
I motion that we appoint Eddie Christensen and Val Hill to the respective boards.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Here's the poll. And number five. City manager report.
Um you've certainly have received in your email today a draft of our strategic plan. Um our uh department heads have been working on uh strategies for each of the goals that were set. Um it's just a draft, so have a look at it. We'll bring it back officially in city council at another time. But I want to get your feedback now before I bring it back. And. I think that's. Oh, the the legislative session has started. And so I will be um going to the legislative uh policy committee on Mondays. At between twelve and one thirty. And I will bring you brief updates uh from time to time on that.
Was Margie our legislative liaison by assignment or just because she loved it?
Um she loved it. The mayor de facto is a member of LPC. But not all mayors go, so they don't have to, if they don't want to. But if they would like to, that'd be great. Or if you would like to assign somebody to uh fill that role, that's also great. I will for sure be attending all of those meetings and keep you updated, so. It is up to the council how they want to handle that. So, right?
Does anybody have any inclinations to be a legislative liaison?
I was just gonna say, could we take a city council or a city vehicle up to somewhere? Too soon, we're just done.
It's not too soon, it's not.
Well, I I have no interest, I don't know.
And she didn't, I was ghost, but she would watch it a lot.
She would, and she had a passion for it, for sure. Yes. One thing that we forgot is we forgot to do uh council member reports. Do you wanna? Jump back to you guys.
We're just gonna do that once a, once a month.
Yeah, and it's the second meeting.
I was thinking it was quarter day. Does anything, does anybody have anything to report from their committee assignments for this month?
So in our cemetery board meeting, we discussed the um wreaths around America that were placed during the Christmas break. I don't know if you noticed those or not, but we wanted the youth city council to know how much we appreciated their work. On that and and the time that they put into that was very well done. Um it is.
You take that back.
Yeah, we pass that on to the rest of this youth city council first. Thank you. It it was very nice and 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 it worked out really well. Um there are some funds that are available, but people who have veterans. If they want to, once it's bought in next year, they can actually buy a wreath for a specific person because there's just a limited number that they receive. To put in the cemetery, but it was very, very nice. And you can, like I said, buy one for a specific uh veteran as well. And along the lines of as we were talking about the veterans today. They they put signs out on known individuals, on vets, and Beverly Thomas does. If you know any veteran that did not receive a sign uh during uh November. A long sign, would you please let Beverly Thomas know? She's always surprised when she finds someone new. Who hasn't received one but is a veteran. So uh if you know someone that missed that, and once again, we're grateful for the help that. Everyone gives for those two things to honor the veterans that we have. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody?
Someone even planning met. And three public meetings. One was very off topic. And then they tabled a number of things to rewrite some things as well, so. There'll be some things coming. Megan did really a job with the crowd. She handled it very well. It was it was backed.
That was regarding the South Town.
South Town.
Well, I think I'm actually quite happy with that.
So that one passed with some uh. Additional. I used to go in to the stipulations. So it's it's a goal. Um the one concern that they were gonna put in writing was uh. The Los Amigos and and others had some concerns about. Shredding on and off water to hook up things without notice, so they encouraged the city to communicate a little better. They had full staff and no no washing water to run the business that day, so. But other than that, it it approves, so.
Did he talk about the water trucks turning on and it's?
Yeah. They were very, it it did go off on a tangent about roads, safety. And they, I think, did bring it back to, that's not our concern, but. All in all, that would have proved, when we folded on tonight, it proved. And then they're gonna, they'll be immediately losing.
That's a lively board. Thanks, Jack. I'm glad you like meetings in a fun.
Great. Uh library board, we met last night. Uh you've reviewed the strategic plan. And it is a five-year strategic plan uh that. They hope to include an eventual expansion on the library. They know that the rec center is uh ahead of them in line. Uh but there's a number of initiatives they're working on. Appreciate the good work there. I guess the one. Uh thing I might uh mention is there. You know, there are some restrictions, things that are happening in. School libraries that we are not affected by, for example, handbook lists, those types of things, but we're trying to get. Ahead of those if it does come our way. Also some. Brands and other things we're applying for every county. We've been working with them. Orangeville Library has. Some pretty cool things you can check out, like Nintendo switches and three D printers and those types of things. And uh we're looking into some more about that. And uh even some literacy classes for. Different groups, for example, seniors and. Anyway, they're just doing a lot of things. It's it's definitely not just a place to get books. You know, they may do a cooking night or they talk about a music night. They just really want to connect. They're using the community center. We used to call the Evrum Senior Center. For a lot of their uh events and uh. Yeah, just a little update there.
I uh I attended this historical um. Board on last Wednesday and uh. They're a they're a great bunch of people who are really dedicated and want to keep the history of Evrum alive and well. Sarah Thomas has all kinds of uh digital files that she's been given, mainly along with the DUP. So the group is trying to form and and figure out the direction which they want to go. So it was a good meeting. I had to skip out a little bit early, but. Anyway, Kevin was there and and uh. They uh they've got a good direction for him, so I'm really excited for that.
The red board is having a hard time meeting. The Scandinavian board meets tomorrow.
Right, what was that still? Next one. Alright. We've come to the end of city council. Twenty first of January, twenty twenty six.
Would you like emotion?
I would like, I would like emotion.
Emotion we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Let's vote. All in favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.